Good evening and thank you for joining tonight's meeting of Tuesday, April 5. We just came out of an executive session and so we'll just, we'll get started. I do want to just acknowledge, because people can't necessarily see, we've probably got about 40 or 50 people or so from our Unit C Teachers Union unit. And just want to acknowledge and thank you guys all for coming tonight and doing so quietly and peacefully in here, which we appreciate. And so just wanted to acknowledge that so that people on TV know that we've got a lot of people here. We will start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we do at every meeting, I'll go ahead and read the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. We'll do public comment next. So I know we have Leah Campbell, who is, I believe, a parent who is on the Zoom who would like to speak. There she is. Hi Leah.
Hi.
Can you just give, introduce yourself and give us your address, please?
Sure. My name's Leah Campbell and I live at 40 Redfield Road in Wakefield.
Great.
So I'm here tonight because I heard that one of the items on the agenda was the contract negotiation for the ISPs. Because of this and the significance personally and globally, I wanted to share with the committee some thoughts on this incredibly important topic. But before I do, I first want to express my gratitude towards all members of the Wakefield Administration Team and Wakefield School Committee. I have truly appreciated how much effort goes into all decisions made, both big and small, always keeping our children and what is in their best interest in the forefront. I also wanted to say thank you to the amazing people who choose to go into the field of education in all its facets. Our teachers, specialists, school nurses, counselors, therapists, administrative assistants, principals, team chairs, cafeteria workers, maintenance staff, crossing guards, janitorial teams, and today, most importantly, the ones who work in the role of our paraprofessionals. You are all the most selfless and hard-working group and the very individuals with whom we entrust our most precious possessions every day without a second thought, because you truly are the best of the best. As a new family in the Wakefield School System, one of the first things of many that blew me away about this incredible district was the way my girls, two of them, Mia in first grade and Ava in kindergarten, talked about their teacher helpers. Even at their very young ages, they can see firsthand how critical professionals are to the effective delivery of academic and social emotional lessons, smooth transitions all day throughout the building, and opportunities for additional support for kiddos that need a little extra. I can speak firsthand to the difference, a little extra, in the form of a paraprofessional means to individuals. My seven-year-old daughter, Mia, has Down Syndrome and requires individualized support to most successfully navigate the inclusive environment she has worked so hard to be a part of. For Mia to shine and to be able to show everyone that she is capable of the same endless possibilities other students are, she needs a couple of things. She has to feel safe, authentically believed in, and challenged. And this is where the PARs come in. To be able to fill this role and to do these things, you have to be, well, made of magic, is what I always say. You have to be able to motivate, engage, inspire interest, redirect, refocus, offer positive reinforcement, and have endless patience. You have to be able to teach, help, guide, encourage, and know when to gently push. This is a lengthy list of job requirements, and if they were to all be listed on a job posting, you might be thinking it sounds almost unachievable. To be honest, I don't know that I could hit all the marks. But somehow, every paraprofessional my littles have come across do all of these things and so much more. And I know I'm not speaking alone. I believe I speak for many when I say we are all incredibly aware of the scope of skills and talents our paraprofessionals possess. And don't get me wrong, PARs are crucial to all students, in all classrooms, and for all teachers. It is just not some children or some classrooms who benefit from the skills of these amazing educators. It is the whole learning environment. Think about the list of what I shared paraprofessionals do. Don't we want this for all our learners? I kind of think of it this way. Teachers are absolute rock stars and PARs are their superheroes. PARs are the men and women behind the curtain, so to speak, that are setting the stage to allow for the teachers to do their thing flawlessly and confidently. Teachers can do their thing because they have their person, who can help divide and conquer the many pieces of running a successful classroom, which can, again, on any given day mean teaching academics, soothing a crying student, trying to figure out why another student might not be able to understand material, helping another one in a social situation, teaching kindness and how to be good humans, and all the while making each student feel excited to be at school, loved, and safe. It's a Herculean task, but PARs help to make the impossible possible. Quick shout-out here to a few of my favorites, Ms. Powell, Ms. Al, Ms. Farrell, and Ms. Jones, the real-life superheroes who have touched my girls so far. In conclusion, I just wanted to write tonight to support this amazing bunch and ask for any additional consideration to be made to help create a contract that allows this group to be appreciated and compensated for the priceless services they provide our students and staff. I greatly appreciate you taking the time to listen tonight. Thank you again for your service and investment in our children's education, opportunities, and futures. I am very grateful to have my little girls learning and being supported to reach their potential here in Wakefield by this amazing staff. Thank you.
Nice job Leah. I know you were nervous. You did great. Thanks for coming, for joining us. Danny, I think you're going to be up next. Danny, can you tell us your name and the address that you live at?
Hi, my name is Daniel and I live in Wakefield 23 Inningherd.
Awesome.
And I think, so PARs taught me for a good life and taught me having good friends. And they deserve a good race.
Lisa Koplik?
Should I tell you my address?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Lisa Koplik and my address is 5 Ardstone Circle in Reading. So my name is Lisa Koplik and I'm a classroom teacher in Wakefield. Over the past few weeks, the paraprofessional community in Wakefield has worked tirelessly and transparently to educate the community on the inequity present within the salaries earned by the paraprofessional staff as compared to similarly demanding staff positions. PARs in Wakefield currently make $23,000 to $29,000 a year before taxes and health insurance. This is not okay. According to the MIT Living Wage Calculator, the necessary annual wage to get by in Massachusetts as an individual person with no children is $41,416. A living wage should be the absolute minimum starting salary. Regardless of their specific role, all Wakefield ISPs and PARs are invaluable. There is no way to decide that one PAR's job is worth more than another. PARs are essential to a school community, and schools simply cannot function effectively without them. In addition to covering morning duties as well as lunch and recess, PARs run math, reading, and writing interventions daily with small groups and one-on-one, implement successful behavior modifications through strong relationships with students, inform teachers about a multitude of social interactions that we may not necessarily see, the list is truly endless. Most distinctly, our PARs work in incredibly demanding roles and offer a myriad of supports to Wakefield's most vulnerable students, and they do so by thoughtfully building solid relationships with these students. I know that for many PARs, working with this dynamic population is the highlight of their job, but that does not mean that they should do it without a living wage. Without PARs, our students and teachers would suffer. Treating PARs with dignity and respect and offering them the ability to simply live a life in Massachusetts without struggling is something that should be at the top of the action list for the coming years. We truly believe that retaining current staff and paying them equitably would benefit all people within the Wakefield Public Schools and by extension, the community at large. To offer our PARs a living wage to start, plus the opportunity to grow that salary over time through professional development opportunities, would confirm that Wakefield values the paraprofessional staff. Further, it would be an imperative step toward acknowledging the importance of their partnership with special educators, classroom teachers, and students. Care for the PARs that give 100% to the kids, day in and day out, along with so many more hours and duties than ever thought possible, by properly compensating them with a fair, equitable, living wage. 81 staff members in Wakefield agree and sign off on this public comment.
Sheila?
Thank you. My name is Sheila Junta and I live at 75 Woodya Road in Wakefield. Hi. My name is Sheila Junta and I have been working as a paraprofessional at the Greenwood Elementary School for 12 years. I've also lived in Wakefield for the last 23 years and have two daughters who are fortunate enough to attend school in this community and recently graduated from Wakefield High School. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and share my thoughts on the essential role that paraprofessionals play in our school and our appeal to receive a truly fair, dignified, and sustainable living wage. What I have learned over the last month is that many community members do not even know what a paraprofessional is or the integral work that we provide to the students of Wakefield. This job has changed tremendously over the last several years, and we are doing so much more than making copies and wiping down cafeteria tables. We are the educators, along with our teachers, who are running small groups, working with high-need students to provide one-to-one support, ensuring that students' special education needs are met, and providing all students with the academic, social, and emotional support that they need to be successful. Paraprofessionals go far beyond their job descriptions, yet our salaries have not increased at a rate even close to the cost of a living wage. It's hard to adequately express how fulfilling this job is, to know that through my day-to-day work, I am actually making a meaningful difference in a young person's life. I recently received an email from the mom of a student I worked with 10 years ago that said, "Look who's going to college." It was very touching, and it was very emotional to think that I was a small part of another person's long-term success and that the genuine relationship that we built made such a lasting impact. These are the moments that define the essence of our job. However, it feels demeaning and, in all honesty, embarrassing to stand here and plead to be paid a living wage. A living wage that would elevate us above the poverty level, a living wage that would provide true economic equality reflective of the work that we do, a living wage that shows us that we are valued as equal educators. There are many paraprofessionals who wanted to be here but could not, because they are working at their second or their third job. There is no question that this financial hardship has a direct impact on job performance. When our primary, most important job is to work with Wakefield's children, care for them, support them, advance them, champion them, then one job should be enough. We know we are here every day to serve the needs of our teachers, our students and their families, and to help create a learning community where every child in Wakefield will thrive. We take immense pride in this work. The ISPs are also well-aware of the school committee's shared goals of improving both our working conditions as well as our students' learning conditions. We believe now is the time for us to achieve those goals. Your willingness to engage with us meaningfully and substantially at the bargaining table and elsewhere does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? I asked before, but I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight, you guys. Student Advisory Council. We've got Sophia and Bella on.
Yeah.
Me and Lisa tonight.
Is that not Bella?
I don't know.
That's not Bella. Hold on one second. We got some background, we got some people leaving for good. And we cannot, WCAT, can we turn the speaker, the sound up? It was really hard to hear the parent speaking. So Sophia, are you going first?
Yeah, I can start.
Okay.
So regarding academics, Term III ended last Friday and yesterday was the start of Term IV. And the report cards have been posted, are going to be posted in iPads next Tuesday on April 12. And the skill of bilingual literacy testing will take place the week of April 25th to the 29th. This award is given by a school district in the state in recognition of students who have achieved proficiency in English as well as one or more additional languages. And then regarding visual arts, WMHS Theater Arts Production of Good People made it to the final round of the 2022 Drama Fest competition. They received four awards. Zacharia Baumhardt got Excellence in Acting. Isabel Camuso also Excellence in Acting. Rachel Hoffman also Excellence in Acting. And Maggie Fournier in Elizabeth Leon Sound Design. WMHS Winter Guard finished second at the New England Championships with a season-high score of 93.74. And Molly, can you pick it from here?
Hi. Continuing on the visual and performing arts, the WMHS Winter Percussion will perform at the New England Championships this Saturday at Dartmouth High School. A number of our students have artwork displayed at the new exhibit, Art in Edibles 2022, at the Albion Cultural Exchange in downtown Wakefield. It begins this weekend and runs every Friday from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. through April 15. And before we get to the other school news and timely happenings, I believe Mr. Kent is here attending to give athletic updates.
Is he giving athletic updates now?
Well, I think if they coordinated it this way, he certainly could.
He was there and then he disappeared.
Ryan, can we let Brendan, is Brendan in the waiting room?
Oh, there he is. He's back.
He probably just had to help his dog for a minute or something there.
You're on mute.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I did.
Molly just handed it over to you to give us an athletic update?
Oh, awesome. Yeah, so since I've been here, obviously, winter sports ended. We had an awesome winter season. Honestly, all of our teams did amazing. It's tough to even begin with one team because they all, they all had a great season, but also our Boys and Girls Track, obviously, they've been a powerhouse for a long time now. Coach Ruben Reynoso, Perry Papas, they just do an amazing job with that program. The Boys went undefeated, Boys Track Team went undefeated, Middle Six League champs. They won the MSTCA State Relay Championship, and they finished, finished second place at the MIWA State Championship. Ruben Reynoso was named Boston Globe Coach of the Year, and also Perry Papas was named National Coach of the Year from the previous season for cross-country. We had multiple individual champions at the league and state level. Probably the best performer individually was Bradley Diaz, won the New England Championship as well as the Massachusetts State Championship. In fact, he actually broke the state record at the state meet in the 600, and he was named both Boston Globe and Boston Herald All Classic. So track, amazing job. Girls Basketball, both basketball teams had awesome seasons. Girls Basketball, there were super-high expectations and they, they delivered, they were dominant throughout the entire season. Won a share of the Middle Six League Championship, qualified for the state tournament, got a home tournament game, and advanced to the Sweet 16 in the tournament. Boys Basketball, they, you know, really, they had a kind of Cinderella tournament run. Their expectations were not as great as the girls coming into the season. We had a new coach, kind of big, big shoes to fill, filling in Brad Simpson retired after 50 years, new coach calling help and new system. We kind of started the season off slow, but the team just got better and better throughout the season. They kind of squeaked into the state tournament there at the last few games. They got the number 28 seed, but that didn't stop them. They went on a tear, just upsetting team after team after team, advanced the Elite Eight of the state tournament, knocking off a few of the really higher seeded teams. So awesome, awesome season for the Boys Basketball Team. Boys Hockey, another team that really had an awesome season. Same thing, advanced to the state tournament, got a home tournament game, had their first state tournament win in almost a decade, also advanced to the Sweet 16. Wrestling, another awesome season for wrestling. They won the MIWA Division III North Championship, and they were one and a half points away from winning the state championship. Archurival Morrow's won the state championship. We were a point and a half behind them, so just barely missed out. Nate Ickes, son of our head coach Ross Ickes, won the state championship in the heavyweight division, so that was pretty cool for the Ickes family. Gymnastics had another awesome season, qualified for sectionals. Molly Dredy, senior on the team, qualified for nationals. Our Boys Swim Team, who, they, they don't always get the recognition they often deserve because they're co-op with Winfield. They won the Cape Ann League Championship again, so they had a great season. Girls Hockey, I think, I don't know if Mike Boudreau's in the house, but Abby Boudreau, senior goaltender, won the MIWA Sportsmanship Award. She was honored at the Boston Garden last week for that. So, you know, all in all, all of our teams, there we go, I see Mike on the camera now. Proud, proud dad moment. And, and I should add that Abby also committed to La Salle College to play field hockey a few weeks ago as well. So all in all, just an amazing winter season for all of our sports teams and student athletes. Spring sports just started up a couple of weeks ago with tryouts, and our teams just started up this, this week. Every team, one of our teams has played so far, with the exception of Boys and Girls Lacrosse start tomorrow. So it's been a great fall, great, great winter, and we definitely have some high expectations for some of our spring teams. So all in all, everything is going good in the athletic department.
Excuse me.
All right. You have a question?
Yeah. Brendan, has the cross-country team gotten a banner yet?
So we're actually working with Coach Papas on that right now.
Okay.
So I met, yeah, I met with him the other day and we're looking into that, yeah.
Okay.
Because actually, both, both teams won it this year. I don't know if, it's been a long time. Well, the girls won the Divisional State Championship and the boys won the All-State, which we haven't done since 1972, I think. So, yeah.
Yeah, they deserve one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Any more questions for Brendan or our liaisons? I have a question, Sophia, and you, you can say, "I still don't know," but last I saw you, you were waiting for some college news, and I just wonder if you, if you've made a decision yet or are you still kind of waiting?
I'm still thinking about it.
Okay, all right. That's, that's a totally respectable answer. I just know you had some exciting things that were maybe coming your way. So, no, so I think if nobody has questions, we can let you guys go and get back to your homework and studying. Thanks for joining us again tonight, you guys.
I don't know if there's any additional announcements.
Oh, Molly, did you have more?
Yeah, we were just going to finish up with the other school news.
Oh, other school news, right.
So this Thursday on April 7 at 6:00 p.m., the high school will be hosting the eighth graders at the open house and academic pride night. Seniors are also supposed to order their caps and gowns by last Friday, and if they haven't done that, they should do it as soon as possible. Ms. McLeod also shared a general timeline for the senior events for Senior Week in her update last weekend. And lastly, we'd like to say thank you to sophomores Leo Corangelo, Sebastian Price, and Alejandro Vorda for assisting Ms. Traficante in the Parent University presentation on the transition from middle school to high school.
Awesome. Thank you. Sorry about that, Molly. I forgot that you said that you had more updates. All right. I think now you guys can go and study some more.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, guys, for coming. Brendan, was that Brendan's official update for further, further in the agenda?
I'm still here if you guys need anything else.
I think we're, I think you covered it, Bren.
Sorry, it was a little long-winded.
No, that's good.
No, it's perfectly okay.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so then we've got the consent agenda?
Yep. So.
Oh, actually, before you read that.
Please.
Originally, we had meeting minutes for a full meeting and a subcommittee meeting. I took the subcommittee meeting off, so we're just going to be approving the full committee meeting from the 22nd. And next week, we will bring in the meeting minutes from the, they needed a couple of edits.
Yep, so moved that the school committee, I'm sorry, no, moved the school committee approved the minutes of the March 17 School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee.
Nope. Nope, you should read it as-is.
Read it like this, okay.
Yep, read it, yep.
Sorry, I'm new to this. Moved that the school committee approved the minutes of the March 22, 2022 School Committee Meeting as presented. Sorry.
Motion made and seconded, seconded by Stephen. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? So we've got six, six to zero. Mr. Markham is not here. And then we've got a gift?
We do.
Okay.
So tonight, we have one gift for your, to accept with gratitude. It's from the Greenwood PTO. It is $100 for the Virtual Parent University, which happened in March 2022. I think we have a motion?
Yep. Moved that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $100 from the Greenwood PTO for the Virtual Parent University program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? None opposed, so we've got unanimous six to zero. And next on the agenda are comments from me, of which I have none. So Doug, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you very much. Just quick comments and updates this evening. Just an update, there's always some curiosity around where things are going with COVID. In the last week, our numbers went up more, considerably more than we had in the prior weeks. We had a probably a three or four-week run where we were in single digits. Last week, we were up to 20 cases. So far this week, we have, we're up to 25 cases with 23 students and two staff members. We have also seen kind of an uptick in flu and stomach bug and other kind of ailments that have really impacted our school enrollments day, day in and day out. I know at Galvin right now, there's kind of a spate of, of flu happening there, so there are a number of students that have needed to be out. Our nurses continue to be really just a fantastic resource for parents and for faculty that are, that are just, you know, wanting to keep track of, of what's happening. We also are continuing with our testing. So again, I've shared this number before, we have close to 2,400 that are testing every week with our rapid antigen tests, and that's by and large where we're getting the majority of our data right now. So I don't know if there's any additional information from CIC this week or anything?
We are continuing to do symptomatic testing in schools, and we have, like Doug said, about 2,200 of staff and families who are testing weekly at home. So Tim O'Brien will be delivering another distribution to the schools for the next two weeks to cover us before and after vacation.
Yeah. So the vacation is an important time for us. You know, we want to encourage people that if you're demonstrating any symptoms for ailments that you, when in doubt, stay home, stay safe. If you have questions, just please check in with school nurses. And so we also know that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed will be kind of revisiting the symptomatic testing program just to see how the numbers are going, and also providing information back to the districts about whether they will be continuing to provide the rapid tests to districts. So I think that they're going to assess kind of the, the benefit analysis, a little cost-benefit analysis of continuing with the testing. So we should be hearing more in the next two weeks. So we should be hearing more in the next week or so on that. So as we get that information or as it becomes available, we will certainly share it with everybody.
Kind of an interesting mixed blessing that we're talking about flu and not just COVID, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know if anyone has questions on that.
Do we know when the state would be targeting sort of winding down the testing?
We were told that they were going to revisit this the third week in April, third, fourth week in April, and so usually when we get right around vacation, the department will usually come out with some type of an announcement about when they will be making a decision or what changes that they might be making.
Do we expect them to be sort of abrupt with their decision, like there won't be any this week, or do we expect them to give a date, some date in the future, like?
Well, I think if we've learned anything in the last two years, they haven't really demonstrated a consistent pattern, so they've been sometimes abrupt and sometimes slow to react.
So predictable in their unpredictability.
Predictable in their unpredictability, so very well put, thank you, yeah. So again, as soon as we have more information, we will share it with the committee and certainly the community as well. So that's quick comments and updates. Our elementaries, elementary schools are participating in MCAS this week, third and fourth graders are getting back to traditional MCAS testing, which has been a change for us. One of our elementary principals shared today that, you know, it feels very busy right now with all that's going on, like we're getting back into the demands of the regular calendar and the regular schedule while we're still kind of working with some of our impacts and kind of our holdovers from COVID. So, but I know that elementaries are very busy with testing this week, and so I know, and I know students are working hard in those spaces, so that's a, that's a quick update there. I'd like to take my, I'd like to take my kind of items out of order, and I'd like to invite Glavia Smith, our Director of our MEKO program, to join us via Zoom, just to give a quick update in terms of what's happening in our MEKO program. Good evening, Glavia.
Good evening, how are you?
We're good.
I apologize that I could not be in person today, but I'm here. So thank you, Doug, for that introduction, and I would like to say good evening to everyone. It's been a while, and I think I've seen some of you guys at different events, but good to see you all. So I just wanted to give you guys an update on our program. Our kids have been doing fair, so we continue to operate at 62 students this year. We had two students from the high school who transitioned out for many reasons besides, regardless of how much attempt myself and the administration at the high school attempted to keep them on in the program, so they seem to have transitioned, which seems to be working out better for them. With that said, we continue to have 62 students at the, in the program, majority of them sitting at both the high school and the middle school. This year, we had a number of our students engage in extracurricular film sports. We had a good number of students doing football, but basketball season was definitely our most popular season, so we had about, I want to say six or seven students who were both part of the varsity and also, I always forget, it says varsity and the other team.
Subvarsity or JV.
Okay, JV, thank you. Varsity and JV. So we had a number of students who were involved, and this year, given that we were giving some increase on our grant, we were able to supply our students with buses, both two buses for 6 o'clock and also for 8:00 PM bus to help with the schedule of them getting back and forth for night practices. And one of our students who's on the varsity team, Diary Burton, who was on the varsity team, they definitely went further this year, and he was very happy to be part of that team, and he was very successful as a member of that team. With that said, I think as we are coming off COVID for the past two years, we are, this year's the one year, I think it's more of our assessment year for our students academically, and I think we are now starting to see some of the challenges and deficit of what COVID caused for some of our students from being home for a year. So I think a lot of our students in elementary are starting to struggle. A lot of them, we're seeing a lot of behavioral stuff going on with them, we're definitely seeing some academic struggles with them. And I think with that said, I've spoken to Doug numerous times, that given our increasing grant, I would really like to pursue and to look into an elementary coordinator to add, to support our elementary students, so that we have someone who's working directly both with our elementary parents, elementary staff, to help our students achieve and also to lessen the academic gaps that we're seeing, mainly in reading and math, and I think that would be a great addition to the Wakefield MEKO team, so that we can support our kids much better on the elementary level. In regards to the middle school level, we still continue to have Mr. Clashere, who's our academic coordinator over at the Galvin, and that has been a great addition to the Galvin team and to the students, to the families. It has helped tremendously in being able to stay connected with the kids, both academically but also socially and emotionally, where he is the point person for our MEKO kids, but it's starting to, it's starting to really turn into, he's intertwined himself into Galvin so well that I think it's more than just the MEKO students that utilize him, all the students at Galvin does, which have been a great blend for our kids to see that anyone that works under the umbrella of MEKO is open to the entire district, not just them. So he has really broadened, I think, the relationship between our MEKO kids and some of the community kids, because they're seeing, they're both utilizing Mr. Clashere at the middle school. At the high school, I think they're working hard. This year has really been a very difficult year for them, I think for many reasons, but they continue to plug away. Our Black Student Union is still running. We have several students who run that club. For the month of February, we, they had a project where district-wide, we had everyone wear, it was considered called Blackout Wednesday, in which everybody was to support the club by wearing all black in support of Black History Month, which was a success throughout the district. We're hoping to do something like that next year, and at this point, we are currently working on two projects that, one of them we're hoping to do in June as a bigger community, kind of like a community picnic for Juneteenth, so stay tuned for that, so we're working on that. And some of the, some of the kids are really excited about that event, to connect with everyone in the community. So I didn't know if you had any questions?
Glavia, it's Mike Boudreau. What are your expectations for next year's numbers? Do you have any sort of targeted goal?
Next year, I'm hoping to be between 68 and 70 if possible. Those are high numbers, but I'm hoping I can get some good numbers. I'm really trying to add more students to our elementary cohorts in the district in order to have kids start the program at a sooner age other than at early, later time. So I'm hoping this, next year, I can move our numbers to 68, which really was where the district had been for a couple of years prior before I started, so I'm hoping I can get us back to that level of students.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Just one quick question. You had said that there were some needs at the elementary level and that most of the students seem to be at the high school and middle school. Do you have, do you happen to know offhand, if you don't, that's okay, kind of what the breakdown is of elementary, middle, and high?
I do, give me one second. So I could tell you, at the high school right now, we have 24 students. At the middle school, we have about 22 students. Elementary-wise, we have 16 students, and they are spread out throughout the elementary program, to the exception of the Doyle.
Okay, great, thank you.
Welcome.
Glavia, do you imagine that elementary support person traveling amongst the schools then if the kids are spread across the schools?
Yes, so what I imagine for their schedule is really for that person to be situated at a particular school and to split up the week of the school, to spend at least a day, a day and a half at each of the schools every day, traveling, but also being available as needed for other things, but also being the point person for some, mainly for our kids that have transitioned new to the district, because I think that's where we need a lot of support in regards to record-keeping, supporting parents through the transition, supporting kids with transition, especially when we have like first graders that are coming in, and this is their first time getting on a bus. And I think this would be a great addition to support the students throughout the district. So my hope is that person will be able to travel throughout the district for scheduled days, but also be available on other days when needed.
Perfect, thanks. Stephen, did you have a question?
I did, hi, Glavia. I was curious, I just assumed that there was some sort of impact on sponsor families from COVID, that maybe some people sort of had withdrawn from the program? And if I'm wrong about that, that's great, but if that was the case, have you seen any sort of reemergence of families wanting to sort of come back in as we start to emerge from COVID?
So I would have to say for the Wakefield families, I don't think their commitment and their level of involvement has really changed. I think in September, in October, we hosted a joint bowling event with both our Wakefield families and our Boston families. It was a good turnout, we did have some families sign up, but I think once we started to see a surge back up in December, it became a little bit hotter for families. And I have to say, you know, our Boston families, they were a little bit more wary about connecting and given that COVID numbers were going back up. So I'm hoping now that things are somewhat moving towards in a pace of normalcy for us, that we can reactivate and rejuvenate that process for parents, and I think we see it more apparent and needed when we talk about basketball season, right? Because basketball season is when they have the latest practice, and I think that's where we see a hole in supporting our students who are awake since 5:00 in the morning and then they're staying for basketball practice, which sometimes does not end till 8:00. So I think if we are able to rejuvenate that process, connect families back together, we're hoping we can plug those hours of downtime where the students are just in the district to connect with other families outside. But I have to say that my MEKO families have really been a little bit hesitant in moving with the program and being active and involved due to the increase in COVID back in December.
Thank you. I had another question, maybe more towards you, Doug, but I know that as we talk about sort of how we're going to address some academic supports as we move forward, there's a lot of talk about sort of expanding horizontally and vertically, both expanding the school year and expanding the school day.
Yep.
How does that relate to our MEKO population and their challenges with travel?
Well, we offer buses, right? And so one of the most significant changes that has been made in the last few years, literally few years, is a late bus, and summer programming is also open to our Boston students. So this is, so this is a change for us, and I think it's been really important, and just having the late bus and having, allowing students to participate in athletics and be here for a longer day, I mean, especially at the high school level, has been significant. But summer programming and transportation that we would provide whenever possible is kind of the next level of that.
So we are currently able to meet that need?
So programming is open right now. We're going to work with Wakefield Academy, and we'll see what enrollment looks like. You know, the tough part about the summer is for some families, it works, and for others, it doesn't, you know, based on their schedules and based on any number of things. So, but I do think one of the things that we've talked about is kind of this increase in the grant. So Glavia and a number of us have advocated, our legislators, about kind of getting an increase in the grant. The grant has increased pretty significantly. I don't have the exact number right now off the top of my head, Christine probably knows it straight away. Do you, do you watch it?
Yeah, it's over $100,000.
So, which is significant in comparison to the total grant, but one of the things that we talked about is this notion of a budget-neutral move that could be grant-funded to get an adult to coordinate services. Then we would have someone at elementary, someone at middle, and Glavia is here at the high school. And so in Glavia, yes, she's the Director of the entire program, but if you were to sit in Glavia's office or be around her all of the day, it's, you know, it's a well-traveled office.
Yeah.
Right, and so, but what that would do is that would give us someone at each level. But in terms of, back to your question, in regard to programming, programming is available through the summer, and once we are able to bring that person on board, I think it's only going to make it better, like Dwayne is at the middle school. I think we'll be able to coordinate services more directly and prioritize services more directly if we can get that position squared away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Glavia.
Are those late buses only for athletes?
No.
They, okay, so if they wanted to stay at the school, go to a friend's house?
If someone is participating in the play, or if someone is here, or if someone went to a friend's house, as long as we know that they're getting on the bus, right, then we will, then of course they can take it.
Perfect. I think when we put that in place, I feel like that was in the last three years. It was really about like giving kids the opportunity to socialize a little bit more and just, especially at the Galvin, I believe that some of the kids go over to the Boys and Girls Club for a little while afterwards if they're in middle school, like there's just, it gives them a lot more opportunity, because there used to only be one, I believe, one bus, right?
And just a few years ago, we had coaches dropping kids off at Oak Grove in the evening after practice. Just doesn't, just not equitable or sustainable, right? And so I feel like we've made that adjustment. You know, we've brought on Dwayne at the middle school as an academic advisor. So we've made, I think, several adjustments with Glavia's leadership in this program, and I think it's improved significantly. You know, when we meet with parents and when we interact with students, there's a, it's a really kind of amazing adult group that's working together to support the students, and we're very fortunate to have Glavia here.
I just have a quick question. Amy, go ahead.
When you say, you know, Dwayne's an academic advisor and bringing one on at the elementary, are they actually tutoring as well, or they're just facilitating, being like an advocate for services?
They're being like an advocate for services. They're directing students and families to the right spaces.
Okay.
Yes.
What I do want to add in that space also, if students are having a hard time and they need a quiet space to sit and do work, having Dwayne in that space allows for them to still be in an office setting with our coordinator in order to get the work done. And it's a way, and Dwayne's role is really is to also sit in classes and visit classes if needed, to see if there's improvements that is needed in that area and how to support that student. So he's not doing any active teaching or tutoring, but he's definitely the space where if students need to catch up on work, they need to finish a project, or we need to start holding students accountable for work that needs to be completed, that's a space where they can either utilize that space or where we can have a private conversation with them about that issue.
Yep.
All right. Glavia, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening to everyone.
Thank you, Glavia.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So other, so where are we here in the agenda? So next up, we have our SEEM Annual Report and Budget, and so providing School Committee the SEEM Annual Report and Budget is part of the packet, right? And it's something that we do annually. For those that don't know or people that are watching, we are members, we are board members of the SEEM Collaborative. So what SEEM Collaborative is, is it's a kind of like a separate district unto itself? You're going to say, go ahead.
I don't think it's in the packet.
It's not in the packet.
Okay. So I thought Judy, I thought it was sent or made part of the packet.
It's in the second one. It's in the one that's posted, it wasn't in the first one that was sent.
Okay.
Oh, right.
I'll send, I can send it around.
So my apologies.
That's all right.
My apologies. And so, so long story short, so this information is provided annually to all kind of, all member districts. So we are one of 11 districts that are part of, that make up the kind of the nuclear group, that also, and the superintendents in those 11 districts also serve as the board for SEEM Collaborative, right? So we are like the School Committee of SEEM Collaborative. What seemed, the mission or the purpose of SEEM Collaborative is to provide kind of low-incident special education programming that is not kind of economically feasible to construct. So when we say low incidence, they're kind of difficult programming that would require such intensive resources on the part of one singular district. require such intensive resources on the part of one singular district um that it's not economically feasible for the district to create. So what districts would would do without a collaborative presence is they would look to outsource or kind of move a student out of district. What the collaborative does is kind of like a, kind of like a middle space where if we can't create it here in district, we often look to the collaborative that has kind of programs that are unique and and intensive in a least restrictive environment that can provide additional supports that we often can't. So it supplements kind of the member districts in terms of their special education programming, right? And so uh SEEM has eight sites, eight in in the surrounding districts. They rent the Yule as part of one of their prep programs for, I believe, students 14 to 22. Um, and so they have, you know, so what they do is as they manage these sites, it's like they're like school districts or schools that are, when you put them all together, they may, they have a superintendent who's the SEEM director, it's Kathy Lawson. They have a school business administrator, and so they have an annual budget. And so all of that is approved and recorded in the annual report. Because they are a collaborative, they are overseen, um, and they report, they have a kind of pretty significant reporting requirements to the state and to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. Um, and as part of that, they're also audited annually um as part of just their regular budgeting cycle. So they serve, in these eight sites, they serve about 330 students. Um, their budget is about $30 million, and that does not include other grant funding that they also get as well. They're also a professional development resource for member districts as well, providing job likes, meaning um they will be kind of a a hub for special education directors to get together, to kind of share um resources, to talk about, to do professional development, to talk about how they might be solving problems, creating programming. And so those are the things that they do in regard to professional development. They also have a part where they they focus on um ESL and they, for the member groups, they manage our Title III grant, which focuses on our English English language learners. So so SEEM for us has has really become a significant um supplement or addition to our district and really a really wonderful space um for us to really keep students close and not send them necessarily out of district far away, but maybe send them to a program that we can't create here in district. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about SEEM or about the information that has been provided or that will be provided. Thank you, Steven.
How, like, how much does our membership in SEEM fluctuate sort of year to year? Does it stay pretty?
So there's, there's kind of a fixed cost of about $60,000 for member districts a year. Um, and then it depends on how many students that you have attending programs. So it's like you tuition students into programs and then you're charged accordingly. But if you're a member district, you pay less than a non-member district. There's a differential there.
So like by a couple tenths of a percentage?
Over, if, depending on how many students you have participating, um, you know, Wakefield right now has three students and, you know, we're at, the expense to the membership for us is about $85,000. Out of the 11 districts, we are kind of at the lower end of of the resources that are expended in that space, but it can fluctuate year to year, right? So, you know, the highest member, you know, is paying, you know, 1.2 million, 1.5 million.
I think I meant to ask, how much does our membership fluctuate sort of over year to year? Does it, does it spike and valley significantly or does it stay?
It all depends on the needs, excuse me, all depends on the needs of students.
Okay.
Yeah. So if in a given year, we go instead of having, you know, three students, we have 10, then it would, you know, almost triple.
True.
Yeah. Or it could almost triple depending on the program and services that they need.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Do those expenses fall under out of district special ed costs? Is that kind of where the, where they, the bucket lands?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And is it prorated? Like, we can put someone in SEEM mid-year, right, and not keep them there?
We can, yeah.
Yeah.
We can. That's that's one of the other
Don't they do testing?
They do.
Yeah.
They do. Um, they do have a testing component. Um, so for example, if if a student needed special education testing or if we needed to do an extended evaluation for any number of reasons that required, you know, a different setting or or even a different setting to do testing, they can provide that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is that like a pay per, is it like a, like an à la carte menu too?
Um, for testing, it depends on how much time a student is required to be there.
Okay.
Usually if we're doing an extended eval, we look at a 45-day placement.
Okay.
And so that's, that's where we would start. And if they came back earlier, we would adjust accordingly.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? So those documents that I sent over, there's, they're a lot of pages.
So, yeah, so I'm glad, I'm glad you, I'm glad you pointed out. So, so in the packet, so there's a, there's the total budget, which is, you know, a number of pages, but then there's kind of a, kind of budget highlights, which is what I would recommend that you peruse if you're interested in kind of just getting a snapshot of of the program. It lists member districts, it gives a breakdown for what member districts are paying, um, and also will give you a snapshot of of non-member districts that are also accessing um SEEM services.
I wonder if you've been in the SEEM program before, Doug?
Uh, SEEM was founded in 68, so I I don't know how long that Wakefield has been a member. My, I would bet from the beginning.
Very early, yeah.
You know, um, I would bet from the beginning, but I can find out, Michael.
No, just curious, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, of the 11 districts, you know, there's Lynnfield, Melrose, North Andover, North Redding, Redding, Saugus, Stonem, Wakefield, Wilmington, Winchester, Woburn. Um, and so, um, you know, I I think that the founding members, we've just had a, we've just added a district uh two years ago. We had a North Andover. But it's, it's a really significant group of experienced superintendents. You know, again, it's a wonderful resource for our administrators as well with job likes. So it it checks a lot of boxes for us in regard to support for the district, in regard to English language learners, special education, extended services, contracted services. Um, and so they've really, really been great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And I feel like if we had some more questions on this, we could always kind of bring that back for next meeting if people feel like
No question.
Yeah.
I thought, is, once a year, do we, don't we vote on the budget for that?
Nope.
Oh.
It's just informational.
Oh, okay.
So that the budget is voted on
By who?
Uh, by the SEEM board.
Okay.
So of which I'm, I'm one of the members, right? So um the SEEM board, it, you know, we vote on it, but it's also an annually audited. And again, there's, there's significant oversight because of the number of financial inputs.
And then when we voted on the budget for next year, was that was a piece aligned?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Correct, correct. So this is, so this is a requirement that we share this information in our local districts. And so this is us getting the information out to to school committee. Again, if you have any questions, you can email them over. I will get them answered and get them back to you as soon as possible. You'd like to wait for the next meeting, you can certainly do that as well.
It's only a week from today, so I guess.
I know, I know, I know.
I think when I remember this presentation from last year, what I was, found interesting was the the menu of services that were provided, and they're, like you said, they're very specialized services that you're only going to have, you know, a student or two students that need, you know, you know, one particular service, and that's not, it's not affordable nor scalable for a school district to have that kind of staff. And so this idea of a collaborative where you are kind of sharing the responsibility around providing services that very few students need in one school, but across a number of schools, it's a great way to kind of serve students in an, in an affordable, scalable way. So I I remember being kind of just really impressed with the concept and the fact that you were on the board, and it feels like it's a great investment for the community, for the school district to be in.
The idea that there are so many more non-members, you know, attending the SEEM collaborative as members, it just like goes to sort of how how good the program must be that others outside of the program are just coming at it. That's impressive.
Yeah. And the director is Kathy Lawson. She's also um supporting Rosie in her new role. Um, and and she was a special education director herself prior to becoming the director of SEEM collaborative, which is like being the superintendent of that school, right? And so, um, or of those programs. And so she is um an accomplished leader, and and I think one of her greatest skills is that, you know, if you, if we have a unique situation in the district that we're trying to create programming for a student, um, she's often a really wonderful place to start because if we can't create it, they will try to. They will try to, or they will try to partner with us to figure it out, which again, when you think about, um, you know, resources, limited amount of resources, budgeting, creating programming, hiring unique staff for unique positions, um, having that as a, having that partnership with that that group and such exceptional leaders, I think, is a, is really a blessing for us. So I I use the word intentionally earlier when I described the program as a supplement, right? So it is kind of an extended kind of programming for us where instead of just jumping to, you know, an out-of-district placement or anything like that, this has really been a wonderful resource for us.
Anything else in your section, Doug?
I believe that that is it. So Brendan already went, um, along with the student ambassadors, who's great, and so that's it for me.
Okay.
Um, subcommittee reports, and I'm realizing that we don't have anybody to do the labor. I don't know, Kevin or Mike, if you want to do it, but you guys can do eye contact while I give the, or the, who's gonna, you guys decide with your eyes while I
I think of the meeting. While we're, while, while we're meeting next Tuesday.
Hold on, let me get my financing facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just think.
Oh, give it a little think.
Yeah, yeah. You guys, yeah, you guys figure out, yep. Um, so we met last week um for financing facilities in the morning before there was a FinCom meeting that night. Um, and we got a good um update, detailed update from Tim on a lot of the projects that are going on across all of the different buildings. It was interesting because Tim got, like I said, really detailed, like we were talking about at every school, kind of the different sets of projects that were going on that were maintenance projects, um, which was really great because we had been very focused on budget, 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 kind of leaning, leading into that meeting. Um, so Tim really got to give us a um, a, an update on kind of what's going on from a finance perspective, or from a facilities perspective. And then we did touch base just quickly on kind of where we all prepared for the FinCom meeting, which happened later that night, that I sat in on, Doug and Christine presented, and that went very, very smoothly. It was, um, if it was a 20, it was probably a 20-minute conversation with you guys presenting for 10 and, you know, a handful of questions, um, which says a lot because usually FinCom folks have a lot of questions. But I think we came in kind of well-prepared and it went over very well, and so that was really
It's also our second meeting.
Yes, that is true, right. And but you got, yeah, so that was a second meeting, um, but to a larger group of people or pretty much the same set?
I think there were more members on the second meeting.
Yeah, I feel like, yeah.
But it was also after we had gone to town council on the night
On Monday, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and so we did talk a little bit about how that went, which that went very smoothly. Um, and so that, we are taking this week off because FinCom went well. We decided we did not need to meet this week, and we are scheduled to meet next Thursday. Okay, so now, Kevin or Mike, who's giving the update?
Sorry. So, so we met on the 29th, so week, week before today. Uh, and the focus, you know, we had some of our friends from Unit C in here today, so the primary focus of that meeting really was discussing the strategy for the revised proposal that we we discussed with them as well, and we had a good conversation with them last week as well. So that's going well. It was great to have all of them here, though. I appreciate all of them supporting each other. It's wonderful, so. So that is progressing pretty well and starting to get into some of the other bargaining units as well. Uh, just, just administrations having some conversations, but our focus has been kind of with Unit C thus far.
Yep.
Anything to add? That's for the hell of it.
That was perfect.
Okay. Um, student services?
We didn't have a meeting, so it's nice and quick.
Okay.
No, unfortunately, partly because of this, uh, some conflicts, we ended up having to postpone last week's meeting, so we will be meeting next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
Correct. Not, not tomorrow. That was all like Wednesday, yep.
And then Kevin, policy?
Yeah, so the policy subcommittee, Policy and Communications Subcommittee met last week on Tuesday, and we're making some good, I think, incremental progress on all the policies that that we've been working on recently. The first that we continue to work on, I've been mentioning it for a while, is a sexual harassment slash Title IX policy, um, working with MASC, um, looking at their um recommended um policy, working with our attorney who, an expert within um Murphy, Hesse, Tumey, and Lehane, and who's an expert in Title IX, further kind of amended the MASC policy. So we'll be getting that, and there'll be a companion harassment of of students' policy that we look to be continuing to hone at the subcommittee level and then bring to a future meeting. So making some good progress there. I think some really great changes are digital use. Again, we've been talking a lot about, um, Mr. Ingalls, Dr. Lyons, Jeff Weiner have, had really, you know, done a great work on that policy in particular. We have a great draft, continuing to hone that a little bit. Amy talked a lot about how can we draw our attention to certain aspects of that policy because it's, it's a little lengthy, as a lot of policies can be, but um Amy liked to bold some certain areas, which were great, and I think will be really helpful, I think, for people who just want to know, you know, certain pieces of information. So really exciting about that. I kind of keep carrying over on the agenda bullying policy. We haven't quite gotten to it yet, but we don't want it to go away, so that's, that's going to be on a future agenda. If you remember last meeting, we had placed on the table a conflict resolution policy. And as, I think that two-week period is meant to do, we got some great feedback that the subcommittee wants to kind of go back, collaborate a little bit with with the WEA, receive some additional feedback from them. So we look forward to probably bringing an amended version back to the subcommittee at a future meeting for approval. So that'll be discussed at our next meeting. So all those aforementioned policies are on the agenda for April 11th, um, next Monday, not Tuesday, next Monday at 4:00 PM on Zoom.
Perfect. Thanks, Glenn.
Do you have a timeline on the bullying policy or what you're thinking?
We haven't really talked timeline yet.
I think the
What are you gonna say?
I think the digital use one is the next one that we're ready
Yeah.
To put on the table? And then sexual harassment and then bullying.
Yeah, so I'd say, I don't know, Dr. Lines, if you have an idea, but I'd say probably until
I think Amy's spot on. I think it's
It's going to dip tail with the harassment. There's going to be a little bit of sort of overlap between them.
There is.
You know, what's coming out of that is going to definitely direct, directly relate to what happens in the bullying policy.
Yeah. So it's probably fourth in the queue.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm including, you know, conflict resolution, digital use, sexual harassment, Title IX, and then bullying. So that's why I say fourth.
Do we think by the end of the school year? Do we think?
Oh, yes. Yes, I think that the intent likely, we, we could be putting two on the table, um, probably in our meeting after next, probably the first week, first meeting in May.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I would anticipate in May that it would be put on the table.
Okay. Can I add something, like maybe for you guys to think about? Um, I know how this, the policies are written now, it's stated, um, discipline is up to the principal's discretion. Um, I'm wondering if there's something that can be set that, you know, first offense is, you know, one day suspension, I'm just using that as an example, second offense is whatever. Um, I think when we have it at principal discretion, that can go either way. You can have a really tough principal or you can have a really soft principal or somebody that's playing favorites, and I'm not putting that on anybody, I'm just saying, we don't And I'm not putting that on anybody, I'm just saying, we don't know, that's kind of subjective. I think there's been a few incidents that have been going around recently that I've been hearing about that we're kind of not seeing consequences or if they're happening, obviously, you know, we can't discuss student discipline, but if there's something that's in place that's written down, you guys know I like to have things like if X happens, what's the thing? So if that's just something that maybe can be thought about and so that we have it documented, so you know, when this happens, this is the consequence type thing, so.
So those will, those, I think that that guidance name will be in the handbooks.
Okay.
So, and I think.
But I don't think it gives a specific.
But, but if you are suggesting, if there needs to be additional language, you can suggest that when we, when we do handbooks.
Okay.
So I, I don't think that we give a breakdown of consequences in policy.
Okay.
Whereas, you know, the handbooks are kind of like the application of the policy.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of been the, the dividing line, at least in the past it has been. But we can certainly kind of talk more about this.
Yeah, I think it's something that.
Yeah.
That should.
Because I think the policies for all grade levels and then the handbooks like would break it down by grade level. So if you were to say a first offense for, you know, what's it, it's a kindergarten, you know what I mean? It would be hard to.
I think that's the, the exact reason why it lives in the handbooks, right? Is you have to think about the offense and then the age of the kid and, and then you figure out, right? Because it would be, it would look different for an elementary school.
Is it in the handbook or on the policy that says the principal's discretion?
I believe it's in the handbook.
It is, okay. What does it say on the policy?
I believe it would say that the consequence would align with the handbook and the mass general law.
Okay.
Okay.
Right? So, and that allows.
Because it has to be general.
That allows for the development to level, elementary, middle, high, but it also kind of complies with the, the required law that might intersect with that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, but we can take a look at it.
Yeah. It's a good point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're meeting next week. We have currently on the agenda an ESL update and the, there's gonna be a high school presentation from Principal McLeod and one of the teachers we had the pleasure of meeting during our tour, Beth Hughes.
Yeah, we just have to, we just have to confirm.
Just so that I confirm. Okay.
I just want to make sure that.
Everybody's available?
That everyone's available. Yes.
So, right, we, that's a tentative.
Tentative.
Agenda.
That's a draft.
Excuse me.
When you, when you said ESL, so English Language Learn, ELL or ESY? Or English Extended?
So English is a second language and English Language Learners and English Learner is kind of the progression. It's really, the reference now that's commonly used are ELs.
ELs, okay.
Yeah. ESL is, is old.
That was, yeah.
But, but older, but it's, it's, you know, most of the time, people know them interchangeably. But EL is, is the reference that should be used.
Yeah.
What does EL stand for now?
English Learner.
English Learner. Okay, thank you.
Because there's also ESY, so I didn't even know if we're doing Extended School Year.
Extended School Year.
Extended School Year.
Here's a, yeah, as part of school committee training is the acronym.
Yeah, cheat sheet.
So I think that's it for future dates. School Committee comments, start down with you, Kevin.
Yeah, sure. Just one thing, I, I noticed today there was a funeral for Mrs. Palmerino, who, for those that may not know, she was a longtime teacher, yeah, here in, here in Wakefield. I had her in sixth grade science, really kind of awakened a desire in science.
She was actually in two days. They put her in two days a little bit, which I thought was really nice.
Yeah. She was just an amazing teacher and, you know, I got to have her at the old Atwell. Again, kind of, you know, directed me into a science which stopped at physics, but it was well-lived and I attribute it to her. But she also introduced so many different things. She was a beloved teacher. She brought, I think, Nature's Classroom, I mean, this is decades ago, which students now continue to enjoy. It was after me, but maybe more around Amy's time and my brother's time. But, you know, just a, a lot certainly and just recognize, you know, the role that she played in probably countless individual lives here, her husband as well, who's, who's still with us. So just wanted to take a moment just to recognize and honor her.
Thanks, Kevin.
That's it.
Amy?
Oh, just a quick thank you to everyone who came out tonight in support of the ISP. Am I saying that right? So it was great to see everyone. Thank you.
Amy?
My condolences to the family as well. I wish I had known that's, yeah, what Kevin said, all of that and above. I mean, she was amazing. Couple of things, wanted to thank all the parents that came tonight. They do, having, you know, a child at the Doyle, I see the work that a lot of them do every day and it's unmatched. So they just thank you for coming and, and telling us your stories. Ca, what am I gonna say? Congratulations to all the sports teams. It sounds like we had another great season for that. And also on April 7th, the class of 2026, there's an information night at the high school from 6:00 to 8:00. There should, you should have gotten an email from Dave Robinson on that.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thanks.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Again, I would also echo, you know, thank you to everyone who comes out. I always love it when people sort of bring their, their needs and their concerns straight to the committee and we get to hear those voices. I really appreciate that. Good luck to all the third and fourth graders in their MCAS. I know there are some kids that are psyched about it. I know some kids are really nervous. So get some rest, have a snack, and everyone's gonna do great. We closed out our, our school tours, I think, recently, I think last week, but post-school for myself. And I just want to thank Carol for sort of arranging that new, Doug. It was really nice to get back into the schools and to see the work that's being done in all of those spaces. In every building, the culture is, is both different and in the same, like there's that same level of learning. It's just everywhere, permeates the buildings and the cultures that sort of everyone has, has sort of lived and imparts on the students. It's, it's just been so great. So for everything that's sort of here and is sort of bureaucratic and paperwork and to get out there and see it reflected in lives is fantastic. So, yeah, thanks for putting that together and thank you for everyone that hosted us and put up with us walking through their buildings. I'm sure we were a distraction and they were, they were wonderful for having us.
Mike?
I know how Tom feels now because of the time against Tom, everybody's already done everything, so you don't have anything left to say. Cross that one off, cross that one off. So, yeah, so obviously it was great, you know, and the conversations have been very respectful, you know, so it's really moving along nicely, but it's, it was great to see them here. The tours was on my list. I mean, I, I only went to three. I can't wait to fill in the rest of the ones that I haven't done yet. They were amazing. The post one was certainly great as well. And then the last thing is really for CPAC. I think the candidate form is Thursday?
That's also Thursday.
Yeah, so on Thursday, the 7th, CPAC's hosting a candidate forum. So should be interesting. I think six of the seven candidates are participating, so it'll be great. There's, I think there are standard questions they've asked that everybody will provide their position in. So CPAC's looking forward to hosting that.
Dalby has that PTO night the same night, too.
Excellent. A trifecta. Thanks, good for you. All right, that's it. Thank you.
So Doug was just reminding me that there is a Unity Day at the high school, which Principal McLeod sent an email out in her, kind of her update. And I believe they're having a guest speaker come in to kind of lead the entire school.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct. And I think that they're gonna try to, so what's beautiful about this, and this is being coordinated by Jason Pavy and Margaret Messier, but what's really great about this is that it's crossing lines of other groups that, that, you know, sometimes they interact and sometimes they don't, right? And so, you know, the Black Student Union, the GSA, you know, so this is kind of bringing people together in ways that I, I think we certainly feel like have been, is overdue, right? Is overdue. I think one of the things that as we're recovering in this space from COVID, getting students together and giving them opportunities to, to, to be with one another has, has, is just really been amazing for them and wonderful to watch from, from our perspective because they are, they're great. I mean, they just need an opportunity and space and they never disappoint. So.
And that's May 5th that that's happening?
May 5th.
Is that, is it Unity for something specific?
Just. School unity. General unity.
It's just general unity. It's not with any, not tied to any specific theme, it's just about bringing people together. And so that's, that's the intent.
And the speaker, there's something about hugs.
So I'll have more information for that in the next, in the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I wasn't gonna say anything about this, but something that you just said, Doug, prompted me. So I had a, a bit of an aha moment on the last day of tryouts for high school sports where there was some discussion of, you know, were sports cutting and were they not cutting? And I had this kind of aha moment of, for all of the kids who put themselves out there and decided they wanted to play sports this, this whole year coming out of COVID, I thought to myself, we shouldn't be cutting any of our kids from sports if they're raising their hands saying they want to play. And that's easier said than done. Like, I know.